Welcome, everyone. This afternoon for our school board work session. I have a statement that I'd like to read. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, by action of the Board Chair of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. Due to the health pandemic, the Board Chair has determined that it is not feasible for at least one Board member, the Superintendent, or the school district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location. It is also not feasible for the public to attend at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. In accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Meetings will take place via audio/video conference and will be available on the district website, YouTube channel, and local cable channel 17. Public comment for school board meetings may be submitted to Martha Walls at PriorLakeSavage.K12.mn.us. Please submit no later than Monday, the day of a meeting. In addition, I'd like to make a reminder to all of us that this work session is being audio-recorded and will be on the district website as soon as reasonably possible. Please hold your comments this evening and questions until after the presentations are complete. I will call on each of you for your comments. After that, if you have more to say, if you just wave your hand, I can call on you. If you could please mute your microphone, that would be helpful to pull down a little bit of the background noises. And with that said, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Stallow.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. The purpose for our study sessions is always to share information and to build trust and to make sure that Board members have all the information that they need prior to making decisions at Board meetings and to make sure that our meetings run efficiently. Tonight, we have two primary agenda items. As part of your duty in terms of operation of oversight, we want to be sure to provide you an overview of the work that we've been doing in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll also be sharing that information as part of my Superintendent report during the regular meeting. And then the second piece of our agenda this evening is to continue our work on the budget adjustments that we started over the last couple of months. And we'll continue and have a discussion about that this evening. Should we have time, there are a couple of policies we can also talk about as well. But with that, Lee, if you're okay, we'll go ahead and do the COVID-19 presentation.
That would be fine.
Okay, very good. As you all know, our world and our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community has greatly changed since the last time we were together on March 16th. COVID-19 has caused all of us to live and to work differently than we could ever have imagined a month ago. Tonight, we want to provide you an overview and an update of what's been expected of us as a school district and the ways that we are delivering on those expectations, the ways our staff have collectively continued to focus on relationships, teaching and learning, and serving our students, families, and communities. As we start this presentation, I want to share my deep gratitude for all of our staff and for my team who have been working relentlessly in their support of our students and families. Our staff have been the frontline essential workers who have continued to show up and support our students and families daily. You've seen examples of the many ways that our staff members have stepped up. Our Child Nutrition Services staff is preparing thousands of meals and with the help of our bus drivers, we're delivering those and they're being picked up daily. Our custodians have supported the meal services, the technology, the childcare, and they've remained diligent in ensuring that our schools are clean, sanitized, and safe. Our kids' company staff from Community Ed has been has been providing the childcare along with many of our prayer professionals. And our teachers and administrators have been working on distance learning plans and ensuring that the student experience remains as quality as it would be otherwise as they focus on connections, relationships, social-emotional learning, and academics. Our administrators have been forced to make some fast decisions and at an unprecedented pace between leading and managing. I could not be more proud of our staff, the ways that they're serving our students and families. And what's important to remember is that our 1,250 staff members are also dealing with the impact of COVID-19 on their lives and their families, just like everyone else. This experience has certainly challenged us and exhausted us. And we're all working on things that we've never experienced before. Through it all, our staff have risen to the occasion time and time again and for our community and for our community and for that, I'm truly grateful. Martha, the next slide. On Sunday, March 16th, Governor Walz announced the first round of his executive orders related to COVID-19, as you know. He directed the Commissioner of Education to ensure schools were closed no later than Wednesday, March 19th, for an eight-day period so schools could prepare and plan for the distance learning. Our entire administrative team was together on that Sunday as we heard the orders. And we immediately reviewed the 25-page guidance document from MDE, and we went to work. The expectations of schools was to continue to provide academic learning through a distance learning format and ensuring daily interactions with students, as well as to provide meals to our students, to provide childcare to the emergency workers, and to provide the support for social-emotional needs. I think you all know that in an educational system that's been steeped in tradition for hundreds of years with traditional face-to-face interaction in brick-and-mortar buildings with very regimented schedules, changing this delivery model, not just for an occasional day of distance learning for inclement weather, but for weeks, has been a huge undertaking in every state, in every school district, and certainly in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We also had an additional challenge because the eight days that were allowed for planning, five of those days were scheduled spring break days for us. So we had people that were working during spring break. We also chose to close schools that first Monday and Tuesday, March 16th and 17th. You know, over the last few years, we have seen breakthrough innovation and really some amazing things happening. And through it all, we've always said, you know, the most important thing that we do right now is to teach our students how to learn. And they are learning in very different ways right now as they're filled with, you know, this time is filled with stress for families and for them. This is not normal school, and this is not normal life. Yet our staff are working on maintaining connections with students and families to bring some normalcy to a very unique situation. Next slide, Martha. We spent the week of March 16th, and as I said, many of us worked, many of our staff worked over spring break, preparing and planning, making decisions without really having those timelines or answers that we needed. We knew students would need devices, so our technology department and our principals worked on that immediately and deployed those devices to sixth and seventh graders, as well as to assess which elementary students needed them. We also made sure that students had the instructional materials that they needed. Teachers went through and got books that they needed and other things that they needed out of their lockers. Initially, immediately, our Child Nutrition Services staff went to work preparing and changing the format of how they do things in very different ways. As I said, our bus company stepped up. Kids' company stepped up and did an amazing job. Our custodial staff has as well. So we did a ton of fast planning and I'm going to let the rest of my staff talk about different components of that plan. Oh, actually, I have one more slide. I'm so sorry, Jeff. It is the next slide. Thanks, Martha. Sorry, regarding the transformation of what's happening in the classroom with distance learning. Again, I can't say enough about how proud I am of our staff and our leaders. You know, we really had a great foundation that we built over the last many years, both with the technology infrastructure as well as innovation and personalized learning. You know, when I think back to the decision that was made about staff laptops this year, that's been absolutely critical in order to provide what staff and students need in order to do the pedagogy that we need to online. We've also, that framework of, you know, we've talked a lot to you about the framework of personalized learning. And again, I think about the work that has been done on that and the training that's been done has certainly aided us in this as well and our work on equitable opportunities for students and making sure that all students have access to the quality instruction that we need. So there's a lot of things that I'm grateful for as we started this work and certainly, I don't think anybody could be ready for it, but I'm really proud of how our staff stepped up and ensured that our kids and our families were ready for it.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to kind of segue right after Dr. Stallow and really echo, you know, those five days that we spent planning, it really wasn't all hands-on deck. Teachers, administrators, teaching and learning staff, HR. I mean, it was a collective effort to really reshape what things were going to look like moving forward. And we did have a very good foundation from the things that Dr. Stallow mentioned. And so a lot of the work over the five days and also over spring break was really creating parent and teacher guides around requirements, things for expectations, suggestions, you know, understanding that, number one, through this, the connections with students are key important. Social, emotional, not being with their friends, the abrupt halt to coming to school. Also, you have working families at home trying to balance their obligations on the home front and balance students, sometimes multiple students, across the different grade levels working on distance learning. And so it's very much been a work in progress, but ultimately, too, the collaborative effort of inside Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and then relying on ideas and expertise and suggestions that were coming from neighboring school districts. We really spent a lot of time looking at what were some of the practices coming out of other school districts? You know, Eastern Carver County, Rosemont, Upper Valley, Eagan, Shakopee, Burnsville, and a whole host of others. And so in order to provide really some direction, we have those parent and teacher guides posted so that on our website, so that, again, people, they have a base. They have a base to be able to see what our intentions are and what our outcomes are and suggestions. And then also, too, as we went through the first week, is really launching, gathering feedback. What worked well? What are some challenges? What are some things we need more time? Where are additional explanations needed? You know, are there different, other things we should be doing differently? Is it overwhelming? Is it underwhelming? And so it really circles back to that connecting with students and families and trying to meet them where they're at. And so we did spend the time with some survey, getting some survey information. We had 833 parents respond, 293 teachers, and 422 secondary students respond that first week. And we do have some of those results coming up here in a couple of slides. Next slide, please, Martha. And so one of the things that we're certainly doing is we're leveraging all of the tools that we have. Our Learning Management Systems, CSO, Schoologee, CSO is being at the elementary level. Again, it's a way for teachers to connect with families and students. It's also through CSO, you can see some of the things here, monitoring some of the engagement of students and families, as well as items that are posted. And it's important to be able to track that. The state is requiring us to continue to monitor attendance. It also helps us understand who's engaging with the content or who might need a phone call to see if they need additional help. There is a video there. As you can see, it's a side profile of Mr. Bodett. We do not have the time to share that this evening, but we will get that link sent out to you. It is very similar to what we're seeing across the elementary of Google Meet with students, connecting with kids, going through different project base or different things to help students through their learning. In the upper right-hand corner, too, we have teachers that are posting their activities and kind of the week at a glance. That was one item that came from surveys. Some families just, you know, help us scope out the week of what you're anticipating, what you're expecting students to do. Give us a chance, really, on the home front, to be able to help our students manage some of those some of those ideas and expectations. On the next slide, we segue to Schoologee, and this is our secondary learning management tool. Secondary, we do have some more self-paced guided activities. But again, it's a place for students to connect with staff, teachers, get their learning activities, participate in Google meets with their teachers on projects, and then submit their work. We've also been able to leverage a few other tools. The following slide is iXL. We've had several teachers use this just on a small, small-scale level over the last couple of years. It's called iXL. It is an adaptive, self-paced, online curriculum, standards-based practice that's aligned to the Minnesota State standards. Teachers are able to gather reports on how their students are doing, the progress that students are doing. It does diagnose areas of development and skill for kids. And so while this isn't the bread and butter of what we expect teachers to do, it is another resource that when students are needing additional challenge or as teachers are looking to monitor where students are at in terms of proficiency, this is a tool that we can use. We are at the very front end of using this tool and getting some engaged in this. But some very preliminary results are, we're finding a lot of access. We're finding a lot of, you know, of course, as you can see, the number of questions that are answered and time spent on this. The biggest thing from distance learning is, distance learning is not equating to six and eight hours of screen time. There are other, you know, while those are tools that help access some of those resources, it's not the intent that students are spending their entire day on screens. But as they're, you know, doing some of these activities, these are things that they can be doing. Another online tool that we've used at our secondary level is also called PlayDo. Our Bridges ALC students are using that platform to be able, again, credit recovery and keeping on pace towards graduation. Next slide is just some of the survey overview from the initial one. It was top three positive actions teachers are taking is, again, being available to students and families, hosting and posting lessons and posting clear schedules and directions. And things that we're going to continue to refine as we go through this is find more ways to be connected with classes and teachers, some technology support, and then also managing workload and schedule. First week out of the gate, I think, was successful on a lot of fronts, but I think, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned, too. And we want to be responsive. We want to not overwhelm people. We want to ensure that we, you know, that we're meeting them where they're at. And I think it's safe to say that we haven't quite hit our stride yet. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to get feedback from teachers and students and parents in order to make this a better experience for all those all around. So I'll segue to technology a little bit. As you know, we are one-to-one, grades eight through 12, in iPads. And so I would say from a seamless approach, making sure students had devices. We, you know, they had those, and I think we're able to ease into that maybe a little bit better than perhaps our kindergarten through eighth grades, their seventh-grade students. Our technology department really worked tremendously hard in very short order to go through carts and school-issued equipment to get them ready for sixth and seventh-grade students, which was our number-one priority, and then to work with elementary families through an opt-in process. And you can see the numbers that we deployed over the course of the last couple of weeks. The biggest thing I can say that we were working through is, at that time, information from the state and how COVID-19 was evolving and some of the information we were getting from the state was changing by the hour. The biggest thing that we were racing against was making sure that we could get devices in the hands of students before there was any sort of, you know, mandatory shelter in place where families could not leave their homes or couldn't get access to these devices. And so I do want to publicly thank our technology department and Mr. Malazo for all of his work to pull this together. This was no easy task to go through that, the numbers of devices, get them ready for a deployment so that when families got home, they were easy to turn on and students were able to use them right away. And so it was very, very seamless. You know, device, we had a very small amount of devices that, you know, did not work for some reason. And we had, then the drop-off there is, parents are able to bring them into the DSC, swap them out, get a new one, and hit the road running again. And so we also have been working with families to implement, to figure out who needs internet at home. We've been very fortunate that, as of right now, there does not appear to be a very high number. But there certainly is a number that we're trying to, trying to assist in getting internet access to their homes. Mobile hotspots went out pretty quickly. And we're working with several of our vendors. What they're doing is they're retooling smartphones and making them into an internet access point. And I think later this week, we have, I believe, 40 coming into the district that we're using, that we're going to be deploying out to families who need internet access so that they're able to connect. And then should that prove successful or that we're finding some very good results with the families, we will have more come in, purchase more. We have the ability to get more of those and then to be able to offer those to families as well. I think the next slide, again, is a video of the iPad deployment. All of our sites did just a tremendous job with having families drive up. It was really a curbside delivery. You know, things were tagged and bagged and ready to go. And again, really thanks to our staff. It was a very large effort to ensure that it was a seamless. It was also a very quick process for families coming in to pick up their devices. As you can see, you see a lot of people in cars driving up and staff bringing them the devices, so. And I would say, too, that probably the biggest highlight, when I checked into, checked in at most of the sites during the deployment, given how abrupt things came on and we ended school and then, you know, it was, you know, stay-at-home order, I would say one of the biggest perks that came out of this experience was staff being able to see kids and their families come through in a car and just, again, that reassurance, the ability to say hi, connect with kids. But, I mean, when you're in a time like this, you're looking for a lot of silver linings, and that was definitely one of them. So then the final slide I'll talk with is, we do have childcare available for Tier One workers. The Tier One group does continue to expand a little bit. We, you know, as more and more services come back online, you know, childcare is being provided for Tier One workers. Approximately, in Edgewood, Westwood, approximately, we have 35 to 40 students that attend each day. We are using that full facility in order to spread students out. No students are in groups larger than six to eight with a couple of adults with them. Again, going through all of those protocols, when students come in and staff come in, they're checked by our healthcare services for any temperature, fever, any symptoms. If they have those things, they're not allowed in. But again, making sure that we're doing all the recommended protocols by CDC and Department of Health is important. And then frequent handwashing, social distancing, doing all those different types of things to keep kids safe while they're there. We've had a lot of appreciative families. Being able to have their kids there, it's unsettling, given the time. But I think, too, it's a place of stability for our students. Wonderful kids, you know, their parents are going to work and helping out during this time. And, so, I mean, again, providing that stability, providing that social-emotional support. We've had a lot of appreciative families, you know, attending. And so that, again, another silver lining. So with that, I think that is what I have for this part of the presentation and on child nutrition services. Would you like me to talk about this one, too?
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff.
Okay.
Julie.
The summer food service program, that is the new program that the district is under. We typically do not qualify for the summer food service program, but because of the executive orders requiring us to serve children ages three to 18 by the governor, we do qualify. Usually, you have to have a higher percentage of students that qualify for reduced-price lunch meals. But we do have this waiver to serve the summer food service program. And so we are serving somewhere around 4,000. Today, I believe, it was almost 4,300 meals to anyone in the district ages three to 18. So we, you can see, all of our child nutrition teams are working. We have them split into four teams, and they stay with their teams throughout these days. And we're serving out of two kitchens, Westwood and Twin Oaks Middle School. And we do curbside pickup, and we are doing bus deliveries, and we're adding bus stops all of the time. So please check the website and make sure that you know what the latest stops are.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. And Julie's right, we are serving a lot of meals. We have 16 sites throughout the community that we're dropping meals. And as everyone has said, the bus drivers are really helping a lot. Food service staff are working very hard. And operations, we're working through the changes like everybody is. Changes in cleaning, changes in access, changes to the needs of other departments. And that's really what we're doing. We're deep cleaning the buildings. Construction, actually, it's been helpful for construction scheduling as far as getting into sites, power shutdowns, utility shutdowns. We are making some headway on some of the sites. That piece is helpful. We're really aggressive in our utility usage in all the buildings. We're trying to get a head start on saving utilities, and it's a great time to do that. And also, currently, we're planning our 2019, 2021 boundary routes and changes. It's a good time to do that without all the other day-to-day stuff going on right now. So we're, operations is really busy supporting other departments.
Good evening, everybody. A little update from Human Resources as to what, how we've been able to support the district. First off, one of the things that has been a challenge for us, quite honestly, is just the whole staff assignments and accountability. As others have spoken to, we are all seem to be doing some things that we didn't intend on doing or would have never imagined we were going to do four weeks ago. But with the governor's executive order, that changes a lot. And so just the whole idea of finding out where people are, who they're assigned to, and where we could best utilize them is something we've been working on as far as the processes concerned and developing some standards and expectations around that has been another large push for us. As you know, with the '04 funding issue that's out there, and I think there's going to be some discussion in St. Paul this week on this. Without that fee-based funding coming in, unfortunately, we had to not schedule a lot of our Community Ed people for the rest of the month as far as work is concerned. And that's been taking up a lot of time and it's a lot of emotion wrapped around that as well. But I think some good work has been done. We also laid out some expectations for staff working remotely. Most of the, all of our resources can be found on the website that was created by the district. We've been adding to that regularly. You know, normally, we say, if you don't know the answer, at least talk to the process. The answers keep coming in, but at the same time, you're building processes around these things. So we have to be very cognizant of that. And as some of you know, there's the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which provided some additional emergency specifically for this and also some FMLA expansion along with that. And then the CARES Act that the federal government passed as well, which changes some things around FSAs and HRAs, along with a lot of other things. So it doesn't, all of these things talk to folks' scheduled hours, talk to their benefits, talk to their leave statuses. And so we're building processes around all of those things to make sure we capture that. With that said, just to, you give you sort of a scope...
Uh, with that said, just to you give you sort of a scope of the issue, uh, we've had over seventy people that we're working with uh within the district on uh questions that they have related to uh some of these new leave statuses. And uh about half of those uh have already submitted that. So if you if you think in comparison today on the board agenda, there's three or four leaves, uh, we're working with uh thirty to thirty-five just within the last three weeks as they look at uh how that some of these might apply to them uh and and going through that process. And then, of course, there's some workers' comp things that have been changed. And we, again, we've built a lot of these resources on the website to help staff and to help answer questions. Uh, and we continue to track some of those bills uh that are in there that could really have an effect on uh how we operate currently as well. So we'll have to uh, we'll continue to look at. I already spoke of the leaves under the the COVID nineteen. And I think, yeah, and we built, like I said, the website, we've built a staff resource page, uh, kind of a one-stop shop for a lot of things that uh people might have questions on. There's a Q and A section, there's uh things about wellness. There's a a lot of stuff there that we've tried to build and we continue to add to that uh as we move forward with this through the rest of this school year and beyond um as to what this is going to look like.
Good evening, everybody. Um, as you can imagine, communications has been a little challenging since things change um so very, very quickly with COVID. Um, but we continue to communicate with our stakeholders regularly using the following mediums that you see there. Um, we have created a district webpage for families that contains all of the information about our um distance learning plan, which also includes um supports for students and families. And then we also have a a page that's dedicated to listing all of the emails that we have sent to date, um, just kind of keeping a running list so people can keep track of that if they wish to. We are also getting information to um our local media. And of course, Dr. Stala will continue to be um providing a column to the Parle-lic American and Savage Pacer, uh, the next one, which will be um coming this Saturday. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we post to our uh district social media uh channels on a regular basis, not only to provide logistical updates, but also um really to use that as a way to continue to showcase all of the positive things that are happening throughout the district that are um COVID-related and non-COVID-related. So um we keep that um up to date. Um, and then this video that you see here, it's a little bit similar to the one that Jeff um was showing, but it um highlights at the elementary level um when students were receiving instructional supplies that um they needed from the school. And it also shows people a little bit of the communal distribution home. So Chelsea brought took that video and and again, to Jeff's point, it it's um it's a little bit of a bright spot, I think, for people. So that's a little quick wrap-up from communications.
Thanks, everybody. Um, yeah, you know, I think even that that piece of video that we saw, you know, the the hardest part of all this is our our staff and our kids not being together. And again, the way that um our staff have rallied and shown solidarity in doing everything that they can to help support our kids. We're all doing very different work than we were a month ago, um, but we're all contributing to providing quality support and services to to our students. You know, I also do want to acknowledge, Jim spoke to this, but I do want to acknowledge the difficult decisions um that we made regarding uh community education and the Fund Four for programming. You know, when the executive order first came out, we um heard, you know, keep all employees um employed. And we wondered from the very beginning um if that meant community education and if that meant Child Nutrition Services staff. And um even on daily calls with Superintendent and the Commissioner of Education, people would ask the question and we didn't get a whole lot of guidance. Um, we did know that through the waiver that Julie talked about that our Child Nutrition Services and Fund Four, um, we're getting some reimbursements. They also have uh if they need to, they have a fund balance that they can can uh lean into a little bit. But regarding our Fund Four Community Education staff, um, we we did choose to include them in distance learning um from the beginning, even though we we didn't have to, but we wanted to keep them involved as much as as possible. And we were hopeful um that we would hear something different about the the funding. But we finally on uh April second, um, we got a little bit more clarity uh that spoke to the executive order, clarifying that the executive order does not preclude districts from making budget-based layoffs of staff or administrators for programs where dedicated funding streams didn't exist. And that's when we made the very difficult decision last week uh to no longer schedule those work hours for community education employees. I want to be really clear um to all of you, and I know I've gotten a chance to talk to you, but to our community as well, that this decision had nothing to do with what we value or what we don't value because the programs and the services that our community education um programs in youth programming, adult programming, before and and after-school childcare, early learning programs are all highly valued and successful programs. The decision was based because as primarily fee-based programs without a commit committed commitment of a funding relief, we needed to make this decision in order to sustain the the long-term viability of our community education programs. I know there's concerns about this decision and the timing of the decision, especially the preschool students, families, and staff not having a chance for closure. And I recognize this concern and am grateful for the deep relationships that are established with staff and our youngest learners. Relationships truly do matter. Um, we did ask some community ed staff to stay on longer last week to help transition um to childcare. Uh, and I'm grateful for all that our staff has done in community ed. And I trust that our community education leaders and working with colleagues across the state will will work on innovative plans for community ed programming moving forward should the COVID nineteen situation continue. And I hope we all return to normal very soon, but uh amazing work by our staff. So thank you, Board.
Okay, that's the end of this first presentation. Um, I would like to go around um the screen and see if anyone has any comments or questions. Um, I'll start with Jonathan. If he's not ready, I'll move on to someone else.
I'll click my button. Am I ready to talk? I'm always ready to talk, right? I'm happy to go first because I'm pretty sure that everybody is going to say something to the effect of expressing our gratitude for just the adjustments that everybody has made. The effort from at at every level, from the staff to um the operation staff to teaching to to you see the pictures of the number of meals um every day and you see those numbers. And it's it's amazing to me, the effort and the work that is still going on. And so I'm I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people have some something similar to say. Grateful for everybody's efforts um and adjustments that have been made along the way. I had a conversation this afternoon with a a teacher who uh not surprisingly reached out to talk about other issues, but we, of course, talked a little bit about the COVID nineteen response. And one of the comments that was made is that with all of the decisions and all of the things that had to get done and get done in rapid fashion, um, that sure, was everything perfect? Of course not, but on balance, this was somebody who just felt really, really good that on balance, the vast majority of these things have been handled really well. And that was that was good to hear from a staff person. I do have one question for Jim. And that is that uh you you mentioned in your portion of the presentation, we will, of course, have some utility cost savings. And I'm just, I'm wondering if we have any sense of that at this point. What we're talking about, obviously, with all these budgetary things, one of the things that uh, which is another our next topic. But one of the one of the questions people are getting is we're saving some money. Does that fit into this in any way? So I'm just wondering if Jim can speak to that, and that's all that I have.
You know, I I really uh can't give you a firm number. I could do some research, Jonathan, for the board and to see where we're at. But I can't tell you, um, since we have been in shutdown or shelter in place, we have um virtually well, our utilities are cut down to the bare minimum, the barest minimum. It's what we call night setbacks. So we're not running at sixty-eight, we're running actually at like fifty-eight. Um, boilers are down, um, we got a head start in um Greenwood and High School, those utilities and the kitchens that use a lot of u- uh utilities. They, we got in there early, so that's been helpful, and I can try to research a number for you.
Not critical, it's just curiosity. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Melissa, did you have any comments or questions?
Sure. Uh, Jim, thank you for letting us know where we were with uh some cost-saving measures uh in the facilities on a daily basis. That's great to know. Um, I had a question. I'm I'm seeing some um information or questions, I should say, in the community asking about the school lunch program. First, um, about the parameters of who's getting the lunches. I've heard from some of the folks operating it that they've had folks drive up and they just this they show a number of fingers of how many lunches they need. And and there are families that that come up and there's a mom and a dad in the car and they show ten fingers. So I don't know what our parameters are on how we allow, if we're verifying that they're even residents of our community or our district. Um, and then, secondly, the other part of that question would be um of every uh, how are we getting reimbursed with that? So uh for every lunch, what percentage is getting reimbursed? Where are we getting covered for that?
Because I'll take this one, if that's okay. Because of the summer school, summer programming, we do get reimbursed both for the lunches and for the breakfast that we provide. People have to sign up. There's a sign-up sheet that for weekly um that they choose. And it's usually by the number of students and their family between the ages of three and eighteen. They actually don't have to be attending school here, nor is they need to be a resident of our district. Um, it is a different program than we're typically used to utilizing. Um, and it is a program that anybody who applies for it in the state of Minnesota would get access to it at this time. And so there are different rules than what we're normally used to. It is a better reimbursement rate than what we're typically used to because we don't have anybody um we don't have anything associated with it. So it's a higher reimbursement rate and I can get you the exact amount. I don't know that off the top of my head. But it is higher than normal. Um, as far as people, how many they take, it's typically the students that have to come with the parents to get the meal. However, if there are extenuating circumstances, such as if they have a it's some autoimmune or something that they can't come themselves, then we have made some exceptions in that area. Come themselves.
So a family comes up, everybody's got a same list and they're checking off uh because they're they pre pre uh ordered these for participation. So or they just pull up or and we just hand them meal? That's what I've heard, that they don't check anything.
Right, there isn't necessarily a check to say, well, who, because it isn't, when they sign up, there isn't really necessarily a name attached to it either. It's just the number of students that are between ages of three and eighteen. And we're trying to reach all of those people who may have been laid off, who may um parents who are um not used to home, you know, helping their kids with homework and they're coming and um being able to get meals, but because they're teaching their students all day. It's it, we're trying to be as helpful as we can. That's what this program provides. It is actually um the revenue that we're going to receive in this is will cover the costs of meals and our staffing for this.
Dollar for dollar, the revenue will be covering this, did you just say?
It will cover the costs of this. We did have a few days, especially at the beginning, where there weren't as many meals being served. And those would be days that we might not have covered our costs altogether. But at this point, we're serving around, you know, the last couple of days have been over four thousand meals. And so we we are covering our costs for our staffing and our in our food costs.
And last question, how many meals per day do we generally serve?
Um, we're right in that same range. We generally serve about the same amount of meals, not including à la carte meals. So when you're talking just regular reimbursable meals, we serve around that same number, around four thousand to forty-three hundred regular meals, not including à la carte, à la carte's on the top on top of that. So if you talk about, you know, especially our secondary schools, they would be serving more food than what we're typically are. But as far as regular reimbursable meals, it's about the same.
Could I add something to that too? Typically, that would be spread out over um six or seven school kitchens. They're doing it in three right now. It's it's amazing work that they're doing.
Yes, and I would like to thank them for all the work that they are doing. I've been over there, they are just really, and they're not regular, they're um they're not a cold sandwich and chips. It's like tacos or it may be um shrimp popcorn. And they give instructions on how to reheat the food, so that the students are getting an actual meal just like they would at school.
Okay, I know they're working hard. It's tremendous effort. Thank you. That's the last question I have.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mary, did you have some questions or comments?
Um, yes, first of all, uh, in general, I have been incredibly impressed with how our educators, teachers, staff, et cetera, have uh really worked tirelessly, some of them quite late and after hours in order to get this done, service their students and be there for their students. So I just want to reiterate that for everything. I know that um this was slightly touched on, but I um, you know, we are getting a lot of calls about kids who have left things in their lockers. Um, I've seen stuff on social media, we've received a few emails. I think all the board members received them, but anyways, there's been a lot of comments about that. I was wondering what the plan is, particularly for those uh parents who missed the window or didn't realize something critical was sitting in a locker. How are we handling that?
Uh, Mary, this is Jim. Uh, what we have done so far with lockers, and we haven't rolled out a plan to get back until um the governor uh removes us from shelter in place. But we have gone through, we've cleaned all the lockers, anything that was in a locker, we've bagged with the locker number on it and kept in the locker to avoid confusion. And uh, so we're ready to um allow staff or staff, parents, and students back in as soon as we get to go ahead.
Um, Jim, in that light, one of the pictures we actually put up here and something that's gone off is is showing people cleaning the lockers. Is that when the items were taken out and bagged so that they're going to be safe in in case we all of a sudden let a lot of people back in? How how is that working?
Correct, that was the same time, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Michael?
All right, uh, thank you for all the presentations. I just want to share a few comments, both as a board member and as a parent who's participated on the receiving end of a lot of the services you addressed. Thank you and congratulations. Um, I am in awe. Uh, I can speak first to the lunches since Melissa brought those up. I myself signed up for lunches. I emailed um Emily Malone first and said, is this really an acceptable thing to do if we aren't unfree and reduced? And I understand the income, um, not only the more we generate, the more we can serve, but also helps keep us some of our people employed. And I think that's a really important service. I have been in the pickup line um for the last six days now. Um, I haven't, just to calm your nerves too, Melissa, I have never seen anyone put up more than three fingers. We put up fingers because we're maintaining distance and then we roll our window down where the masked person puts our food in. The meals have been amazing and I've been trying to spread the word in the community and the gratitude is huge. I also think it's been a great thing for our community to focus on with all the hard things that that we have this resource. So I can understand the confusion. I just wanted to speak to it as a parent who's been participating. How wonderful it's been. A special thank you to our our teachers. I have three students in high school who are doing distance learning, uh, one introvert and two extroverts. And coming back online and and being able to connect was a huge deal. Not just content, but um to make that connection with the students, that social emotional piece. I treasure that as a parent over anything they'll learn the next few weeks. And I know we're we're sticking to standards, but I cannot emphasize And I know we're, we're sticking to standards, but I cannot emphasize how my kids feel when they get to do a class meeting or get a special email from a teacher, hey, are you, are you hanging in there? Do you have any questions? Exceptional work, especially because they're dealing with technology overload, you know, when the state can't keep up with all the school G requests or whatever. So my gratitude, I know they had to turn around on a dime and make these things happen. And as a parent, I cannot express my gratitude. I'd also like to say to our administrative staff, and I'd like to repeat it at the formal board meeting as well, that just as our teachers are racing around the clock, our administrative team has been working nonstop since this emergency went into place. And what I try to, I've, I've taken so many phone calls and emails the past few days. I serve on both the Early Childhood and Community Ed Committee. We're dealing with budget cuts. There's a lot of stuff going on. And one thing I will say is that having somewhat of a global perspective, talking to both parents, teachers and admin team and board members, the pace at which you are operating and the magnitude of the issues you are dealing with is unfathomable, unfathomable. I didn't even quite say that right. To have to be in crisis management mode 24 hours a day almost, to have to deal with these life and death situations in some cases, literally, are people getting fat? Are they safe in their homes? Are their adults connecting with them? To do nothing for fear of making a mistake is not the right thing. The fact that you have to just keep plowing forward, I just, I encourage our community to keep reaching out. But I just want to say, we all need to give each other some grace right now because I am impressed how everybody is performing under these circumstances. So as a mom and a board member, I want to share that. And finally, just share a highlight about those connections. We had the good benefit of watching the Red Tail Ridge Parade drive by the other day. And I saw families lined up and down our street and I took photos, so anxious to have that connection and so grateful to the heroes who are serving them. So all those touchpoints you just went through, as hard as everything is, thank you for making a difference. Grateful to you.
Okay, Stacy?
I'm just going to echo, to say echo to what Michael said, as far as, you know, everyone, really basically having to rethink every process that you've ever had to do in delivery of education. And just, you know, I, I know because every other business in, in America is doing the same thing. And so the fact that we're all basically all trying to reinvent ourselves and how we do things and all the processes, and you know, there's unintended implications that obviously happen and that are not met with any type of ill will. And I think, as Michael said, it's pretty incredible to see what you all have been able to pull off in, in such a short period of time. So I, I think I just had one question as far as Fund For and Community Ed. Because I know that wasn't easy. I know, you know, just within talking to Dr. Stala over that period of time, I know we were watching the funding and we're not getting really clear guidance for quite a while from, from the governor's office. And we're hoping for something different. Is there any thought, I mean, I know that fund really is very reliant on childcare, before and after childcare, I believe. I think Julie probably can back that up. But it's for going forward. Is there any, I mean, is there a way, fee-based, we could do even, I mean, it's, you know, just, I'm thinking small term, like something that is sustainable? Is that being looked at? Is that a thought even for just short-term period of time? You know, this in-between or, or just, I mean, just some thoughts on that, if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'd love to. I actually had a Google Meet with, this morning with, with Leanne and Becca and Kelly, who are the two, the three administrators that are continuing to work and plan. Becca and Kelly are also helping to transition the childcare as well as experts in that field. But yeah, we talked about, you know, the uncertainty of what, you know, summer programming looks at, looks like. But that's part of what they are thinking about is how do they run some programs differently and still be able to generate some revenue, but be able to offer some classes? One, one example that Becca gave is she just said, you know, one of the things she's heard from parents is a concern about kids being ready for kindergarten. And she said that she could, would definitely be looking at trying to do some kind of kindergarten readiness, you know, something or other with that. So they're, they're certainly talking and, and working with their colleagues across the, their networks across the states, but we'll definitely be, be looking at what that looks like if we're in the same situation, or how fast can they get things up and running if things change?
Is that all, Stacy? Enrique?
All right, good evening, everyone. I first want to start out by saying what a fantastic effort that staff have done, teaching staff, support staff have done to get themselves ready and get all of our learners ready to be able to move into this distance learning time that we find ourselves in. So much detail, so much effort, the continual contact, the perpetual contact with each one of our learners to try and get them to still reach, still connect and still get to the place where they need to with their learning. No short amount of tears, sweat and pain have gone into that, especially for those who are not technologically savvy. And I want to recognize the work of the administration to prepare us for that eventuality because it was only a matter of time before things would happen. We planned for distance learning as part of a snow day so we could cut down the amount of days that would have to be made up in the event of inclement weather. Well, we didn't have that inclement weather. We had something else, but we were still unable to utilize that forethought to activate this planning and programming. Had we not had the technology, had we not had the people to put technology into place or people to deploy to all the different learners and educators to mobilize that plan, then it would have fallen flat. But all of those components came together. So fantastic effort. As a, similar to Michael, as a parent of three, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school, we get to span the full gamut of things, especially with our youngest who has special needs and is part of the Life Skills Program. Especially for him, relationships truly do matter. That's the one component that, as parents, we can provide a certain amount, but he needs that emotional, social support by being a part of the class, being a part of his, everything that he's doing with his teachers, with his specialists and whatnot. So they were able to put mechanisms in place to allow him to continue to go on that journey and have that connectedness. Some of you know, many of you don't, my house has personally been quarantined for the last three weeks and it expires tomorrow, counting down the time, so that I can run around the neighborhood and be free for just a little bit. So because of that, we were not able to participate in the Red Tail Ridge Parade, which came about because last week was Spirit Week and we weren't able to put things together for Spirit Week. So staff came up with an alternative way to have that spirit, have that connectedness with students, with the different routes for the parade. We weren't able to go, just so that we could protect everyone else. And the Life Skills Red Tail Ridge Parade came to our house to make sure that Mason got to see the convoy of 10 cars of everyone that he connects with, from staff to his, his caseworker, to the paras, to the therapist that he works with on a regular basis. That meant the world to him. And I'm not going to lie, even had me in tears, not just my wife. I was in tears and our kids were in tears about that. So just really driving home how much relationships and the connectedness matter. Speaking to the lunches, because we weren't able to go, the bus company would do a contactless delivery to our house so that we wouldn't have to risk going out and potentially infecting anybody else while we're supposed to be quarantined. So that was a huge blessing for us this past week. So thank you, thank you, thank you all.
Okay, I would have to echo what everyone else has said. Can't be more grateful for all the work that's been done and moving so quickly is just absolutely amazing. Thank you, thank you. And Stacy kind of led on to the question that I had. Our earliest learners are very important learners. We don't want to forget about them. I don't believe we will. And I'd, I'd like to see what we can do in the future, near future, to help get those kids back into a little bit more structured learning. And we'll just have to see what happens. But I was glad to hear that there is some thought as to what direction we can be moving in with them to get community ed and early learners back up and running again. So thank you. Did anyone have any other questions or comments they wanted to add? Not seeing any. I think then we'll move on to the budget. Julie, Jeff, Jim?
And I'm going to start it off, if that's all right with you all. Thank you very much. Again, we're coming forward this evening with an update in the budget recommendations. A lot's changed in the last month. On March 16th, we shared with you the parameters and where we were at that point. One of the things of the parameters were the, maintaining the fund balance between eight and 12%, which we said that we would need to adjust then, a budget of by $3 million. We discussed that parameter around restoring class size ratios and estimated a range for you of FTE, but we have more details on that. I just want to revise the board that that is work as we look at the, the restoring the class sizes between of teacher and student ratios. That was work that was started last year that we would have been doing regardless of the budget adjustments that we're doing right now. However, we are using that work as part of our budget adjustments. So I know that's kind of confusing, but I think it's an important, it's important to call that out, that that was work we would have been, we were doing regardless. We also talked in March about this.
Looks like Terry.
Terry froze, yeah.
Yeah. You back, Terry?
I was changing screens, sorry about that. The other thing that we, we talked about was the open enrollment work that you took a look at as well. And I do want to add that one of the guiding principles, and as we go through the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about that, that's probably changed a little bit, is as we look at these budget adjustments, we really at this point are looking at how can we keep as many of people in jobs as possible? So with that, I'm going to continue on and we'll continue sharing this presentation. Again, a review, our budget reflects what it is that we need to ensure that that strategic direction of ours and our district goals come to life. The outcomes, as I said, are to share those recommendations with you. We anticipate a robust discussion of the recommendations and some direction from all of you this evening. And then we'll come back at the April 27th study session and hopefully be, be prepared for the board to take action on May 4th. We looked at that $3 million shortfall. Pieces of that are because of the 200 students less than what we had originally projected, the state funding not keeping pace with inflation, and then those increased costs of, of health insurance, which really resulted in that total $3 million shortfall that we've seen. Again, the guiding principles on this next slide, I would say that, that where we have been in the last couple of, or the last week, two weeks for sure, has been looking at how we make these adjustments and make sure that we've got people in place to be able to ensure that our strategic plan comes to life. The timeline has not changed at all, we just keep moving through it. We can see what happened during the summer. And if you look at that next, into the fall, and if you look at that next slide, Martha, we now are at the April 13th, where we'll share the full package of recommendations with you and then talk more at the study session into the board meeting on May 4th. Again, the review of the parameters that we had established, the board had established for us a while back. And that two-year process of restoring the class ratios, last year we really spent a lot of time with the elementary analysis of the data. And this year, we've continued to deepen that work as well as really look at the secondary staffing data to ensure that we had appropriate staffing aligned to our budget with some agreed upon formulas at all levels.
I'll step in here and talk about the revenue assumptions. We do know that we should be expecting a 2% increase next year in our general, general education formula. We're anticipating an increase in enrollment of 125 students. We do have a increase in special ed revenue because we, every district gets a 4% increase and we also are a growing district, and so we get some additional revenue for that. And then the achievement and integration revenue that the board has talked about is part of our levy. In addition, the two things that we have really looked at is we do anticipate getting about $200,000 more because we have additional students coming from Farmington. And so we will get some revenue from them for attending the MNCAPs program. So that's about $200,000. And then I do want to talk a little bit about the special ed. We do anticipate we'll get some additional funding in special ed over what I originally anticipated. This year is a new base year. And so it changes, we couldn't have received this money before. I just want to make that very clear, like it isn't something we left out on the table in the past. Because this year is a new base year, some legislation changed, we were able to really work with the Department of Education and looking at how do we code our special education to get, to maximize our base year, to get the maximum money that we could next year. And so we were able to recode our tuition to federal funds instead of taking that from state funds. Then we do, we changed some people who were coded to federal to state. And so what happens is we don't have the reduction of tuition bills from our state aid. And so therefore, we're getting some additional funding for that because we're not seeing that reduction of tuition funding. It's, it's a complicated, again, nothing in Minnesota school finance is easy. But if anybody on the board would like to come and see how we're doing this or wants to look at it, we've been working together with the Special Education Department and making sure that we are accounting for everything and that we're maximizing that revenue and having the best base year that we can this year to maximize next year and future years' revenue. Now, as we continue onto the next page, these are the expenditure assumptions that we had a couple, even back into February, these were the assumptions that we were basing our expenditures off of, and you've seen this several times. And if we move to the next page, I think the update to that page is, and we have talked about this in the past as well, our health insurance rates, instead of a 12 and a half percent, that we have looked at the best way to utilize our funding and it was projected to just be an increase of 8%. And so we're seeing savings, if you want to say that, of $300,000 for that. We've also went out for bids or went out for RFP for our life insurance, long-term disability, and we're saving about $120,000 in, in those two areas as well. And then we've been working hard with our transportation department and working with our partners in the transportation. And after all of this has started and looking at everything that's changing now for the future, they've agreed to reduce that, they think that they can get drivers now, actually, with this change in the economy. And so that projection has been decreased in what we think that increase will be in the future. So we have updated about $670,000 less of those expenditures that we anticipated.
Thanks, Julie. Then we've got several recommendations. Some are tighter data points than you saw a month ago. Some are month ago. Some are new and some are similar. So I think Jim, you'll start out with the restoring classroom ratios.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Dr. Stallow talked about. This is in the budget part of it. But I think one of the main points that I'd like to, I guess, reemphasize is that we would go through this process every year at this time of year. You look at what those class sizes are, look at how many staff you have, and you do the math. And you, in this case, to restore back to class sizes, it ended up with us having six FTEs less in the elementary, 2.7 at the middle school, 1.5 at the high school. So that adjustment gets us to that. What I would say about that is with this process and looking at every year, you go back to a baseline, you're not continually adding on to what you already have. You bring it back to a baseline and look at all your numbers. I think that's important. I think it's fiscally responsible to look at it that way. And to be transparent about what it is, we spent a lot of time talking about what that 32-point or 23.5 in elementary really means. That is real teachers in the classroom. It's not licensed staff across the building. It's the real mass. We spent a lot of time talking about the, what I call the yeah buts and the what ifs and all the variables that go into that. And so in the end, in order to get to 23.5 at the elementary, 30 at the middle school, 32 at the high school, it ends up being a total adjustment of 10.5 FTEs. This next slide is, we shared this back on March 16th, was looking at a teaching and learning restructure. Currently, we have four technology integrationists on the team. And the technology integrationists were positioned that came into the district probably about six years ago now, where we added, and it came largely with the one-to-one devices to the students. And so they've been working hand-in-hand with teachers and students and administrators over the last six to five years, just with new tools. They've been really key into a CSO Schoology online curriculum. And over the course of that time, I've really been helping student, helping staff prepare and move towards Laker learning. And the Laker learning traits and teacher-directed to student-directed and ultimately empowered. And I can tell you, within the last month, any hesitation with using technology, the Band-Aid has been ripped off because all of the, all of the staff are leaning in and they've been particularly a busy crew. And certainly, we've always appreciated them in helping us move in this direction. And yet, we've also been looking a little bit over the course of the last really year in their role and their role in helping and looking at the standards, the standards of education, where technology is not about the device anymore. It's about, again, it's been integrated, but how do we use those tools to help engage students, to empower students, to help students have choice and voice in their learning. And so this restructure is going from four technology integrationists down to a restructure into two FTEs. One of those would be an instructional literacy coach, and one would be an instructional math coach. And so it is a net reduction of 2.0 to the Teaching and Learning Department. Again, continuing to support staff in technology and integrating new tools is going to be center of the department, as well as continuing to work on standard revisions and implementing new standards for student learning. The next slide, we do have several.
I've got that one, Jeff. We do have several vacancies. And one of the things that we've talked about, as every vacancy has come up recently, is we've taken a look at it to see if it's a vacancy that we absolutely want to fill at this time. And I want to be really careful with how I say this. We know the importance of all of these positions. We know the support that all of these positions provide. And we know by not filling these vacancies, that will mean that work will look different and we'll have to deliver services in different ways. However, as I said earlier, one of the things that we've also talked about is how do, how do we ensure that we can keep as many of our employees intact? And by not filling some vacancies right now, that would allow us to do some budget adjustments and also ensure that people could save jobs. So this is one of the other recommendations that's coming forward. The only new position on this slide from, I think, the last time you saw it a month ago, is a 1.0 FTE of an elementary dean of students, which also includes an extended contract. The next slide talks a little bit about our administrative adjustments. And as you look at this, we are recommending a $130,000 target. As part of that, I'm going to beginning, I will be beginning in July, the third year of my current contract. So one of the things that I would ask is the board not to increase my salary per the current contract agreement as part of that savings. And then some of the other options that'll be available to us to get to the remainder of that target amount would be either to include administrative cuts or savings that may be realized through some contract negotiations. So we don't have the exact detail of what that would be at this point, but we did want to ensure that there was a target amount for administration. It's back to you now, Jeff.
In the area of special education, we always look at our IEP needs and what's needed to best support students. We are projecting, as we move forward, a reduction. Not, this is not a health services reduction, but we do have a student who's graduating, leaving the district, that has a one-to-one nurse with them. And so not needing that person would be a reduction due to a lack of student IEP needs. We do have a couple of staff resignations or retirements. And again, gauging case loads and looking at student IEP needs, we, at this time, we're not anticipating we would need to fill those positions. And then also, we have two sign language interpreters. This is not the sign language teachers at Prior Lake High School. These are interpreters that are assigned to students who have deaf heart of hearing needs. And again, with students that are not going to be in the district next year, we would not have those IEP needs to be able to meet. And then we're also anticipating reduction in paraprofessional support due to lack of student IEP needs. Again, this is, you know, a special education, this is something that we always look at. I know Deb Anderson and her team, as well as the lead, sped leads, continue to look at this and look at IEP. Because we do know that we may have some students that may move in over the summer. And once those needs come, if that's the case, then we would be looking at readjusting some of this as well. But at this time, this is what we're anticipating for a special education adjustment going into next year. And on the operational side, I think this is my slide as well. We anticipate some energy efficiency next year of $75,000. And then we also are going to look at our supply and some technology budgets, anticipating reducing those by up to $100,000. So in these two areas, we're forecasting $175,000 worth of savings.
But, sorry, the next slide is a summary slide of kind of that full package that we, we didn't have for you a month ago, but we've rounded that out. You'll see, and we know that this is more money than what we originally had talked to the board about. This is a $3.395 million adjustment, whereas before we had talked about the $3 million. We know that there are some, there were uncertainties with the budget before COVID-19, and we know that there continue to be some uncertainties. So we believe that this recommendation provides more flexibility as we move forward. I think the next slide just speaks to some of those, those long-term strategies that we're going to need to continue to grapple with depending on where budget, state budgets fall, where our enrollment is, and some of those other things. So these are some of the longer-term strategies that we'll continue to discuss as we plan for the future. And with that, we know that there are going to be some questions and some, some discussion around this. As I said, we, we think that that bringing more to you in a package of reductions provides some flexibility, and it also provides the board flexibility in discussion as we look to what we need to do to make those adjustments. So with that, we are happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, I'll start with Enrique. Are you ready to make comment or ask questions?
There we go. Finally clicked. Yes. Where to begin? So, very detailed budget recovery strategy. So first question probably goes to Julie, looking at the 200 fewer students that we're anticipating. Do you also include in the revenue assumptions that we're going to increase by 125? I'm assuming that the 200 is the delta between what we anticipated and the increase of the 125 students?
No, the 200 students was this year that we anticipated, another 250 students this year. That's been our average over the past several years. And so we're actually starting from the 50 students this year and adding another 125 to get to our number for next year's budget.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for making that clarification. I have questions on the 10.5 FTE reduction and restoration of classroom sizes. So if we kind of look at it as a timeline from where our, our staff and our teachers were prior to the referendum, it was more about space and we had very stuffed class sizes with the combination of students that open enrolled and the influx of students just into the district and from natural organic growth happening within the district. Referendum passed, we moved forward, and now we find ourselves in this situation where we're making cuts which feel like we might put our staff back to those situations where they're in that continual firefight mode, especially as we think of the boundary changes that happened that certain schools were likely going to be already higher on that classroom size perspective. So how sensitive is this information in terms of variability? Because I know our staff can operate at, in a firefight type of situation at capacity for an extended period of time and still be effective and deliver quality. And the, I guess, the second part to that same question is, has this data been reviewed with elementary, middle school, and high school administrators to gauge whether the analysis is correct?
Well, I can speak to the second one first. I think that one is one that I've had a lot of involvement with. And I'll back up. Last year, we spent a lot of time looking at the elementary data, and all of those meetings were with elementary principals and, and what those class averages look like. Talked about variables related to the students that are at each grade level in each building, put some numbers to that, whether it was about the number of students IEPs or the number of students that aren't actually in the classroom but somewhere else. So we did all that last year with elementary. And then when we looked at the boundary situation and moving staff around, we went through that whole process basically again in December with elementary. And so, yep, they have been, at every level, every meeting, they've been involved with that. And then Dr. Stallow's directive was that this year, we do the same thing with staffing for the secondary for next year. And that has also included teaching and learning, special ed. So Jeff, Kevin Shuttenger, Deb Anderson, all the building principals and some of the assistant principals that are involved in staffing and registration were all part of those meetings. And we've poured through the numbers, looking at literally every class registration by department to really gain a strong understanding of what that number means as far as a class average. So as far as your second question, I think I feel that we've spent a fair amount of time, a lot of time, going through those numbers and getting their input on what that means, because that's important, that we understand if we say 32 or 30 at the middle school, we really know what that number represents of the number of team talk classes where the ratio is low versus maybe a music class where the ratio was high, and is that the right number? So, yep, to answer your question, yep, we spent a lot of time and they were part of that process.
All right. Thank you.
The first part, the first part of your question, Enrique, and again, I don't have the data in front of me. I'm going to lean into my colleagues a little bit. But in terms of the staffing ratio over the last several years, even when we've had overcrowded classrooms and where we are now, I believe, and to help me on this, but I believe that staffing ratio has remained fairly consistent. I know on some of Julie's former presentations, she did have a slide, we did have a slide with those staffing ratios. I don't remember exactly what they were. Oh, Jeff, you've got your mic. Okay, I'll let you take.
So from the staffing ratios, when, when we didn't have space, we started claiming space that were not originally designed as classrooms. And so in many of our areas, we were able to hire teachers in order to keep class sizes, you know, pretty similar all the way across the last couple of years. What the referendum allowed us to do was to add those spaces for current teachers that we had, and then to restore those bases, some of those bases back to original intent.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions, Enrique?
I do.
Okay.
Let's see. So just kind of looking over all the data provided for the proposed cuts, if I were to divide them into kind of front of house and back of house, front of house being those that are the closest to our learners, those delivering the services, delivering the learning, or supporting those who are doing that one-on-one or that face-to-face type of engagement. It appears that majority of the cuts are within that group. The, the learning and training or teaching and learning group, educational support, that represents $1.8 million in proposed adjustments with a couple of fantastic examples of operational adjustments or efficiencies or even cost savings. That's $845,000. And then administration is $130,000. So if I were to look at the ratio, administration represents less than 7% of that teaching and learning restructure plus special education and educational support. And that is very much out of balance. Having led organizations through this process in the past, through the 2008 economic recession, and in other times, there needs to be a proportional amount of effort put into restructuring on the front side to maximize the operational excellence, as well as continue to deliver on the strategic objectives that our customers, which are our learners, their families, and our community are expecting the value for the dollar. But then also on the administrative side on the backend, that needs to reflect what's happening on the front side. I don't quite see this here. Am I mistaken?
Is somebody going to take that?
Well, I can start. I mean, I think, I think, again, I think that the reminder that I would like to share is, I hear what you're saying, Enrique, you know, especially, especially around that 10.5 FTE. To me, as I, as I explained earlier, that, that is work that would have been done no matter what. If, if we hadn't had budget adjustments, we still would have looked at that. We know last year, we, you know, hired some staff and the students didn't come. And over the course of the last, you know, several years, there could have been additional FTE that were, were hired. And we had never done, at least since I've been there, we've here, we've never And we had never done, at least since I've been there, here, we've never done an analysis like we did. So I think that that right sizing piece would have happened no matter what. And yes, now that we're doing adjustments this year, we're also using that with adjustments.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the 10.5 would have happened regardless? Or is it a portion of the 10.5?
Well, we would have brought forward, we would have done this exercise. This was the exercise that we started last year and we knew it was a two-year process. And as Jim said, my expectation was that we complete the process with the secondary this year. And as he noted, there was also additional work that needed to be done with the elementary because of the changing of boundaries. So yes, we would have done this process no matter what. We would have looked at these numbers no matter what. Now, I'm not going to tell you, if we would have had a 14% fund balance, would we have recommended reducing 10.5 FTE? We would have brought it to you and we would have said, hey, as we look at our staffing ratio of these agreed-upon numbers, you know, we're a little higher than these numbers. And you might have come back, if we had been in a more stable budget time, to say, all right, we're okay with that. It's ironic that we went through this two-year process and found those numbers that we all agree upon and also are in a position where we have to make budget reductions.
Any other comments?
I think the one thing that I'll reiterate, looking at the special education part again, again, driven by student IEP needs and looking at that, you know, we do have students that are leaving the district. And so again, you know, since we do not have other students who require those services, you know, that would make something, that would make sense as to why that's on this list. You know, the other part about the teaching and the tech integrationists too is, tech integration is funded, teaching and learning is funded out of a couple of different pots. One is largely staff development, which is that 2% reserve set aside. So a portion goes to provide, support those staff. And again, those staff members work very hard at supporting, you know, our teaching staff, front lines, as you say. The other part of that is our technology budget. And so two of our technology, tech integrationists are funded out of our tech budget. And again, you know, I think one of the things looking at is, they've done a tremendous job helping staff learn and implement new technologies and new tools. And I think shifting to a curricular support in the standards, we're going to continue to support teachers, we're going to continue to support teachers in new technology. Again, you know, one of the things we've talked about too, what is different, and I think perhaps might be something to think about long-term, is that we are one of the few districts that does not have a technology levy. And so without having some of that revenue coming in, you know, how we look looks a little differently, perhaps as we move forward. And again, I appreciate your comment about continuing to have to support staff in implementing and working with students and helping staff in the student support services. I, 100%, I don't think, there's nothing on this list that is pleasing, I think, to any of us. These are all tough decisions. There's faces behind each of these positions. You know, I think to Dr. Stallow's point, where some of the positions that we have on here, we have natural openings too. And again, those are all people that need to provide support staff. And so a decision to have them as a possible budget adjustment, is that position either is absorbed by other positions or we're at a place where we have to move forward, you know, ensuring that the support that staff have been given, that they've been able to carry out and implement what those strategies are moving forward.
The only thing that I would add here from an HR perspective is that as I look at this and you bring up some good questions and comments, as I look at all of this and look at the amount of cuts related to what we would say is teaching FTEs versus, let's say, for instance, the admin one. You know, you can look at numbers a lot of different ways. And one of them that I look at is how many people are affected by this? And what I mean is as a whole group, with 590 teachers, for instance, and 42 administrators. So I think there's some math that you could look at in there to say, what, you know, what percentage of cut for the number of people that are in that unit versus one and the other? And I think if you did that, you would, if you did the math that way at least, I think you would see that the proportionate of cut leans in one favor or leans in one direction heavier than the other when you only have, I don't remember right now, 42, 43 administrators. And so 130 there versus, depending upon which number you use on the slides, if you include the 10.7 or don't. I think there's a discussion around that too. So I think that's another data point to take a look at as well. And I haven't added all of those up yet, but I think it's, I think it's pretty close. So doesn't give you an answer, Enrique, per se, as far as the exact number. But as I'm thinking through this, I think that would be another data point to take a look at besides just the total amount there.
All right.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, Stacy?
Okay, just a, I have a couple of questions. Jim, you referred to, you know, the ratios, the 23.5, the 30, and the 32. And real teachers in the classrooms? And I know sometimes you're, you know, critiques on that, just in the sense of, can you just explain that more in detail? Like, what, I mean, you actually made one teacher to 23.5 students? And that doesn't include, I don't know, I'm going to make things up, I don't exactly know, like the social worker or the principal or, you know what I mean, like who?
So what we looked at was, what was the ratio of the actual teacher that students are assigned to in a classroom, right? So elementary, pretty easy. You got classroom teachers. Doesn't include social worker, doesn't include the dean, doesn't include a lot of those ancillary report licensed staff. And that's the same thing at the high school. It's basically looking at the, in infinite campus, for instance, who is assigned a class of students? So it's not going to include school psychologists, social worker, all of the ancillary licensed staff that helps support the classroom teacher. It doesn't include those in that math. Sometimes you'll see, and I think even on MDE's website, they'll say the ratio of students to licensed staff, and it'll look really low, and people will say, that's not how many kids I have in my class. So we've removed that in the math, and I think that's important to just say how many students to an actual licensed teacher in the classroom. That's really what we're trying to get to when we look at that. So, and it doesn't also include, in most cases, the special education teacher, because that student is going to be assigned to that grade level and a teacher to begin with. So in that ratio in the elementary, for instance, if we have students that spend their whole day in a setting three classroom, they're still being counted towards that class average because the intent would be hopefully someday they could be in there, right? So it doesn't include some of those unique situation as well. So that's the highest that class average should be. Does that make sense? Did I explain that?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to detail on that.
Yep.
And then in going through some of the proposed recommendations, you know, for me, I'm going to be straight up honest here for, you know, the world's kind of changed in a month, and I know we started this process much earlier than that. So where, at some point, I was optimistic somewhat about the future and the future funding of the state. I am less optimistic of that now, you know, in looking at a long-term view. So, you know, just, and also as far as COVID, you know, the teaching and learning restructure, where I know we've been talking about this for a while. For me, I'm having a hard time changing what we're doing right now because we've been such a flux of change with technology and how much we've relied and that these are direct support for our teachers. So I'm having a little bit of a problem of changing that because honestly, I don't know what's going to happen in the fall. I mean, I don't think any of us do. We might be going through this again. So what concerns me is that, you know, these people have really kind of helped us transition through this and to go through this change again for our staff with this being a direct support to them, I guess I'm having a little bit of a problem with that. As far as the literacy and math part of it, I'm assuming there's no real overlap of what the tech integrationists are doing for this. And so I guess I'd be looking for some clarification of need on this as compared to the tech integration.
If I could, if I could jump in on that, actually, two of our tech integration specialists have been leading in math standards, best practices review, and I think they started that for the last two years. So there has been crossover into the standards and helping teachers implement new instructional practices on the math standard. So it's not a, and again, we have, you know, two tech integration specialists, you know, in that example that have stepped forward and they have expertise in that area. They've shown passion in that area to help teachers in working with their math skills and or help improving math skills. And again, it's another way that we're supporting teachers and supporting them in those new strategies. And it's not focused on the tools. It's focused on engaging kids and those types of things. So there, you know, just to kind of help you understand that we've started to move in that direction, we've been moving in that direction for some time.
Okay. All right. I'm glad to see that. I mean, because to be honest, I, you know, I kind of hope there's more overlap with all of this than obviously what we're seeing with the job title, which I know most jobs are like that anyway. But I guess I have concerns with that being reduced, you know, the full 2.0 as being support. So that concerns me. And the last, or one of the last pieces, I think, the change this month into adding the elementary dean. You know, I've been in the buildings enough to know how important, and I know, you know, obviously, all these positions are important. But I've seen that firsthand make a real impact with our elementary staff. I think our principals and all the staff really appreciate those positions. I know it's already a shared position between two buildings as it is, you know, already. So I have concerns, concerns there as well. As far as efficiencies, and I don't know if we touched on this already a little bit, Julie, but, and I know, Jim, you're talking about some of the savings with energies. I'm assuming, like, I'm thinking like buses, like we're not spending any money on gas. Like, to be able to have some idea if there's any type of savings that way for us not driving the million miles this year, I think I'd like to see something, if there's possibility of seeing something like that, you know, what it can be, if it impact. And then the other thing is, is, you know, I know when we kind of, we went over some parameters at the beginning of this process when we started talking about this. And when we initially, and I know I said some of these things, you know, obviously the parameter between the eight and 12, because that's our fund balance. But I also, we also said, you know, go through a process, but, you know, is there a way as to which we can do this to have, I don't want to say the least amount of impact, but we don't want to affect the student, you know, obviously every day in the classroom, you know, by going after things like programs. And so I know there were things that we had kind of said that kind of set you guys up in the sense that we maybe, you know, didn't look at everything. And so my concern is this, is that the way and what has happened over the last month is that something that I had hoped might be only be a one-year deal, I'm feeling like it's going to be more of a multi-year, you know, process as far as reductions. And so I'm trying to advocate a little bit for, in the sense that I think we need to next do this again, to be honest, and have a more robust process and have everything on the table. And my concern is cutting this deep with some of these positions and them being direct supports to our students and our teachers at this first blush has concerns for me. So I'm wondering if we stick it, my, I mean, my, just my thought is maybe stick it around at the 3 million, which we originally said, what is that going to do to our fund balance? You know, these are just some thoughts that I've had. So, and I don't know, Julie, if you want to chime in there, I don't know. If we stuck at the 3 million, you know, would that still keep us within the fund balance or not?
Yes, that's kind of what we had originally said, is that the 3 million would keep us at our, between that 8 and 12% fund balance. It's a, right now, with what's happening in our schools, we know that we're not receiving any more money in the general fund for anything that we're doing district, for the district. We're paying everybody as if they're, you know, here at the schools and working their normal hours. So that's continuing. The areas that I do see some savings is possibly in substitute teachers. We have had some discussions with the transportation company, which is why they're, if they're required to pay their drivers. And so we need to pay them in order to pay their drivers. So we're not saving anything in transportation at this point, but we are saving for next year on the increase. So they have been very helpful with that piece of it. So that's why you saw the $250,000 come in on this presentation that you didn't see at the last board meeting. The other area that we could possibly, there's some other, like, energy, like Jim had talked about a little bit, that's possibly an area that we will see some savings there as well. We also know that we'll see some additional costs coming in. So we're looking at what those are for technology and the cost for deploying all of our, you know, if we have hotspots and all those things, that those aren't in our current budget. There's some time that people have put in to get all of that deployed. But we've had some additional expenditures as well, trying to get everything up and running for this process. Do I know exactly where we are right now? I don't exactly. I'm still kind of waiting. We have some legislation that's coming in. So I'm hoping that we'll possibly get some additional funding or some clarification would be great because it kind of flips back and forth about what we have to do or, you know, there's some additional funding. So I'm hoping that through this legislative session, we'll get some clarification on what exactly that, if we aren't getting any more money or we, they are going to help us out a little bit.
Is it, can I ask, is it normal to not get any more funding right now for general fund? I mean, would we normally be done in the process as far as getting money for general fund? Or would we normally be collecting all the way to the, I mean, I just don't know timeframe wise. You said, still more money for the general fund this year?
From the legislature.
From the legislature. Okay, I didn't know. I thought you meant. I see what you're saying. Okay. And then I guess another thought I had too was, and I think I was trying to see if maybe you mentioned it on here. Okay, yeah. The administration piece, the adjustment, negotiation parameters on salary and benefits. Can you talk a little bit about what that would mean specifically?
I would be hesitant to talk about what that is. I think it's just that, you know, everybody but the teachers is up for negotiations. And I think it's a matter of, that's a variable that hangs out there, that we don't know what that is. And that's better to be served or talking in closed session around negotiations.
Okay, but you're talking for future. I mean, these are for, that we need to be settled, not current ones, obviously.
Correct.
Okay, I think that's it for me.
Okay, Michael?
I am here. I would echo some of the things that Stacy said. First of all, I want to, as we always do, go back to our mission and to some of those strategic directions that the community helped us shape as we look at budget. That the community helped us shape as we look at budget. Um, which includes fiscal responsibility. Um, in looking at some of the savings we have and looking at how the world has changed since we sent you out with board direction. Um, to cut a certain amount and what areas to look at. Um, I would be curious what my fellow board members think about, you know, looking at. Could we get closer to three million as our recommendation this year as opposed to three point four? I appreciate that you brought forward. An aggressive budget cuts so that we could look at options. Um, and I understand why you did. Um. But I would underscore, I think Dr. Stallow said earlier, what can we do in this moment in this fiscal time to A, best serve our students and. Save jobs, um, knowing that if we're going to take a look at this again next year and the year forward. We don't know what happens and and cuts may be harder and deeper in the future. But these are pretty unprecedented times. Um, some of the things that stand out to me when I look at our strategic direction, one is um, that emotional behavioral piece. I just want to say that my experience in the schools, um, the last year and a half, I would also speak to the dean position at the elementary level. Just because I have witnessed the times that either deans have been pulled in or haven't been available and needed, would have been pulled in. Um, to help with issues, um, which means other staff, teachers or principals um, are dealing with some of those. So I know there's a lot to their role, but I just feel like that social emotional piece right now to pull that extra. Elementary dean is concern uh, concerning to me. Um, tech integrationists as well. Um, I understand that we went a little heavier on tech integration as we looked at a one-on-one iPad deployment, as we got new laptops, as we. Went to a more digital platform. Um. In light of where we are and not knowing the predictability of the future, I have a hard time seeing pulling those tech integrationists. And I would say the feedback I get from teachers is that even when COVID is not happening, they rely very, very heavily on those tech specialists. So that's the feedback I hear. And now we are in a digital format and we may be this fall. Um, and so I have concerns there. I understand the need to increase the math and English literacy. Um, I I realize how that transfers to standards and standardized tests. Um, I'm encouraged that Jeff said there may be some tech specialists or integrationists who. Also have some specialties in that area. So maybe there's some creative ways to look at that. But that that taking that a supporter rate right now really concerns me as a board member. Um. In terms of vacancies, um, I, the way I would view vacancies right now is to say. If, for example, we don't build position like naturalist, it's not because we don't value it and it won't come back online. But if we can keep from cutting other people at the moment. And then come back and look at that. I mean, we're really facing hard decisions. But if there are people employed right now. And if we hire someone new on, and that means somebody else loses a job, that's something I'd like to think about without losing sight of how valuable some of those um, vacancies are. I think to to pull them out and to save that money to save a job. Doesn't mean we don't value them and wouldn't work to get them back online as we work together. So that's my my thought on that. Um. Also, with equity and personalized learning, um, that brings me back to deans and tech innovationists as well. I I do not want to drop the equity piece, and I I I don't want to drop the good work that's been done on personalized learning. So I'd be curious. You know, what we can do to preserve the supports in place that are going to help us continue to address um, those pieces. Um, and then maybe Dr. Stallow knows, I asked her about this, and and she could speak to it more, or Julie could, um, or Jim. But I, you know, some of the other feedback I get is similar to what Enrique said, and that is, um. Why is the DSC staff not being cut more? And I think, and and we could talk about this at the board meeting instead, but. As I understand it, it's not always apples to apples. For example, a position might have been added as part of a referendum movement or come from safety uh, funds. So maybe even at board meeting time, I I'd like to see that addressed so there's some clarity for our public to that. Keep some of those people come on and are funded, not at the expense of some of these other positions. Um, so there, I guess I would look to my board as we talk, fellow board, to see, um, with feedback from Julie and the team, if we could look back to getting closer to three million. And what could we save going forward right now?
Any comments from it admin? Okay, um, we're getting close to seven PM, um, but I think it's important that we hear from all the board members regarding the budget adjustments. So as long as there's nobody objecting, we'll continue with the work session um, so that everyone has a chance to speak. Um, and then shortly after that, we'll take a break and go into our board meeting. I know a few people have joined. Um, so you'll get the pleasure of listening to the rest of us speak. Um, we'll move to Mary.
Okay, thanks. Um, so, yeah. Boy, there's a lot here, but let me just start with, like Enrique, I I have led organizations through restructuring and had to make a lot of difficult decisions. Um. Being a little bit older, I went through the nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three mini recession that we had and lived through that. And managed people that had to be laid off all the way through the two thousand and eight recession and various other adjustments that have happened since then. And usually there's, whenever you go through these reductions, there's a long and a a short and a long-term cost benefit analysis. But the key that you plan on surviving past the short term. So you look at the impact on the product and the long-term viability. In this case, the product is our students. You don't manage by exception and make short-term cuts, hoping things get better in the in the long term. Unless you really have a long-term plan. And if the long-term plan damages our ability as an organization. To actually educate the kids, and it's usually a non-starter, because you only delay the inevitable. I think I've said this before in other conversations leading up to the study session, in my world, we call that circling the drain. You're not plugging the drains so you can fill the sink back up. You're basically circling it, just waiting for things to kind of just die and get worse. So, you know, and I want to go back to what Stacy indicated. She said, we don't know what's going to happen. Uh, we have seen a flattening of overall growth. The state demographics aren't in our favor. Uh, we've seen the impact already of the state budget and the changes they're going to have to make. Um, and our economy was basically due for an adjustment. You know, so, you know, I appreciate the fact that when these trends started occur, that that conversations were started uh, last year. But, you know, I I know we're talking, you know, Jim, you mentioned the percentages, you know, between the staff and the um, between the administration staff or the DSC. But staff doesn't equate to impact. And I think that's, that's the thing that's weighing on me. When you reduce services, you increase class sizes, it does have a circuitous effect upon the quality of education. And that's our primary product. And once you start to go downhill, you actually have to build back up. We put a lot of work, extra work on our teachers in addition to some significantly sized class sizes in some areas, particularly in our core areas. So I just, I want to keep that in mind as I ask my question. And I'm going to start with. What options overall were actually put on the table for consideration? Because the only thing that we've heard is what was, what came to us after the budget discussions, which was the primary. Uh, looking at cutting staff, educational resources, basically the the individuals that face our students. And that, I'd I'd like to know what was considered, if it was everything really put on the table. Um, and where what, what happened to that cost benefit analysis of what was put onto the table that you've arrived at this? I'd like to kind of understand the process, in other words.
Yeah. Um, there was a lot on the table. I mean, we don't, I don't have. You know, I don't know that I can, nor necessarily do I want to share all of that right now, because I think that. Um, I think that can cause other alarm um, to to different parts of our district. But we certainly did, you know, we we clearly heard what the board said um, about um, not looking at deep programs right now. Um, so we did look at a a lot of different things. Um, and this is the recommendations we're bringing forward. If this isn't acceptable to the board, then we will go back and and look at additional things.
Okay, um, is there a way that you could. Uh, even summarize the different areas that at some point in time, I understand it's not going to happen right now. Of the areas, the general areas that were looked at, because I, you know, in my opinion, I'll be honest, the the cutting up of the staff. Uh, that we have it to me should be the last resort, because they are the ones on the front lines. And I believe that even leading up to this, with or without a pandemic, they were already stressed. And so as everyone has kind of stated, you know, getting rid of a dean, getting rid of paras, I think is, to me, is kind of a non-starter. The tech integrationists, uh, even without a pandemic, they have, they're critical. And probably going to be even more critical regardless of the e-learning, just because of the nature of technology and the and the need for it. Uh, in general, I mean, everything is going automated, everything is becoming software and electronic based anyways. Um, they teach our teachers, uh, they they help, they support, et cetera. So. Obviously, that's not an area that that I, that's also an area I would say that I would consider to be a first resort. Um, the uh, you know, when you walk through the schools and we talk to people, um, you know, and we get feedback from. Uh, you know, even as far back as a couple of years ago, we were having a hard time finding paras, and even then it was never enough. Um, so that that also makes me very, very nervous. Um, so I would like to see what else is on the table. The other thing that um, we've talked about and we've seen in our budget is the high cost. Of some of the technology uh, that we have put into place. Uh, we've also um, seen uh, various. Um, things with long-term facilities maintenance with with Jim and and did we look at what can be delayed? Um, did we look at any efficiencies in the multiple licenses that we do have and the renewal of some things that may be duplicative? Or things that we're not ordering in economies of scale? I mean, some of these software licenses, some of these large orders for different grade levels, they exceed. Sometimes up to a million dollars. So, I mean, can we get some economies of scale with some of our products and services? Um, is there, that's kind of what I'm getting, is there other ways to do this besides really affecting the key people? And and what makes this district greater, those frontline workers, the the educational support staff and the educators? And um, you know, it's, they've done a tremendous job. I I. And they're, and they've worked under incredibly difficult circumstances. This is just highlighting it. I really don't want to see, I want to see that be our last resort.
Um, Mary, I would just, I would just add, and, you know, I don't, there's nobody, there's nobody in this meeting right now that's going to disagree with you about. The value of all of our staff and, you know, when, as an organization, eighty percent of our budget is people. So it's really difficult and and, yeah, we talked about a lot of things. Um, but it's really difficult to look at a three million dollar adjustment without it impacting people. I I do want to reiterate. That the process that HR and teaching and learning did with our principals around the class ratios. That has not increased class sizes. And that, I mean, I want to be sure that I stated that correctly. But our class size ratios are the similar to what they've been. We we. That additional ten point five is not at the expense of increasing class sizes. And Jim and Jeff and Julie, tell me if I'm wrong on that, but I just, I think it's an important distinction that that process was underway regardless. So outside of those ten point five, there is certainly an impact of frontline staff and positions. That we're recommending not to fill. Um, but that process was in place regardless.
Um, I, you know, I've witnessed class sizes that were pretty large with additional student emotional. And developmental needs just growing as a percentage, um, as the overall, as the whole. Um, so, you know, I, that's, that's, I I understand maybe on paper. It it looks that way, but that's not what I have experienced. So I'm a little concerned about that, and I would like to continue the conversation on that as we go forward. But in the interest of time, I do want to kind of touch on the idea of implementing a tech levy. And that was briefly mentioned here. Um, you know, I don't know if it's Julie that needs to speak to this or how this would work. But if that were on the table, what would we be looking at? Um, what would be the timing? What would be the percentage? Uh, how how has that been planned out?
So the timing of a tech levy at this point, um, we would have to do something before or on the, in November. In order to get that, not next year, but the following year for any kind of tech levy. Um, anything we do after November, because a technology levy can be run at several different times during the year. Um, that, um, anything we do after November would be for the second following year. Um, so there is a timing issue with that, Mary. Um, so if that's a discussion, I think there is some tight timelines that we'd have to meet in order to get that on the November election. Um, definitely something that could happen, though. Um, and then it'd have to be a discussion of what, what is that a? Um, we'd have to look at the technology, and I know we have done some preliminary looking at that. I know. Um, Jeff and his team have been gathering information on that. Um, and we're looking at what is that need? For technology in the district. Um, so that's, I'm not sure if I answered all your questions, Mary, but that is something that we have looked at. And started looking at seriously for the future.
Okay. Um, with regards to the uh, district staff. Um, I'm not quite sure from the budget what is considered district staff and what isn't. But, you know, I, again, I want to reiterate that percentages don't equate, you know, just human percentages or count percentage don't equate to percentage of impact. And we have increased um, positions in the district administration, at least on paper, when we look back at the. Board meetings and uh, what we've approved and what we haven't approved. And I, and also, no matter what, when I I make this clear, because. I've been in the position of having to lay off people and earlier in my career, I was one of those. Whenever you're talking about human beings, you're impacting um, their livelihoods. So it's nothing that we should ever take lightly. Regardless of who it is or what what role they are. But I am wondering, are there positions that in hindsight? We probably going into this, uh, we shouldn't have added, or that we can continue to eliminate from the administration. Um, as we move forward. Uh, and again, I want to focus on the fact of where where I stand, where I personally stand. Is that the last ones you impact are the ones that are on the front lines, because they are the ones making us who we are. So if we back up and we accept a little bit more pain higher up the channel. Is there a chance we can start to look a little bit more at the percentage of people in administration? Uh, that um, we can uh, eliminate or positions we can restructure to, for any additional savings?
I'm not sure if you're expecting an answer right now, Mary. Um, I don't know that there could be one right now. It's something to be looked at. Is that what you're going with here?
I'm wondering, yes, I I mean, we have um, the the um. Um, recommendation. I'm wondering if we, you know, if it's, if it's viable, if it's something that um, that's possible to go back and look at. Uh, to continue those discussions. Or are we at, or does the, does the analysis say that we're at our bare minimum there too? I I don't know.
That's a, that's a fair question, Mary. I I guess I would um, in simplest terms, say, there's always options. We can do, we can, we can make any decisions, and there's going to be impact to every decision that we make. If the direction of the board is that we need to have a higher amount um, of administration, then we're going to have to look at things differently. And and really, that's what, that's. And and really, that's what that's what I'm grateful for tonight is that we need clear direction from the board as we as we move forward to bring something back on April 27.
Are we ready to move on?
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Okay, Melissa?
Thank you. Couple of different things here as I'm taking a look at Slide 18 with operational adjustments. I'd like to talk more about there. We've said that the most important thing to do is to teach our students. I heard that earlier in the study session. My question, what's our priority matrix of what's essential to do that? So obviously, teachers, teaching staff is important as number one, whether it's COVID time or budget time right now. Essential frontline is our teaching group. Question is, have we considered reducing or eliminating our dependence on consultants, thereby doing some more work internally? One of them I think of is Nexus. We've spent millions of dollars worth Nexus. Maybe we can back up, take more responsibility of project and work on our own and make a positive financial impact toward the budget in that regard. That would involve taking a look at that contract, navigating some facility challenges and energy things ourselves, because that's what they're paid to do. So that was one area. I don't know if that's been considered. I didn't see anything about consultants on on any of the budget cuts.
Right now, Nexus is mainly being paid out of Fund Six, which is our construction fund. So there isn't really a whole lot of, I mean, I can't, I don't even know if any money is coming out of the general fund. I'd have to review that. But very little, if any, is coming out of the general fund right now for Nexus. There are other consultant areas that we do work with, especially in just different areas of the district. And so we certainly could add that to our list to look at if there's things that, a lot of the times, it's for services for students. So we have some, especially in the area of special ed, that we can't find teaching staff to help us with. And we do consult a lot of times with special ed, different organizations to help us with in in the classroom.
Another consultant area I know is the racial equity consultant, Shraki Holly. I know that we've lapsed three years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to that. Has that been considered?
So our contract with Dr. Holly has been, we have had him come into the district for the last couple of years to train all staff on the foundations one and two. And currently, right now, we work with with Dr. Holly at a lesser degree, where he's coming in and they're providing cadre support. The intent of always working with Dr. Holly is that we build our internal expertise and then to continue to work on our own. And so moving forward next year, what we have, what we've had slated in the spring this year, will move it over into next year in order for him to fulfill that part of the contract. But that wouldn't be additional dollars. And the amount of money that we would continue to use for Dr. Holly would be based on what our staff is requesting in terms of additional support in the area. The funding for Dr. Holly also comes out of staff development, and that's part of that 2% set aside that's reserved for professional development of staff members.
I think during this time, that would be something to to take a look at. I mean, again, our number one priority is hanging on to our teachers and our teaching staff. And then you mentioned there are some other consultants. I mean, this is an area that I think should be on the table. It was my understanding, and I think it was the board's understanding, that everything was on the table.
Any other comments, Melissa?
And then I would echo what Mary said about more admin inside at the district office. Are there areas that that because that's not frontline teaching student forward? So I would take a look at additional spots there. I know that we've added some in the last couple of years. Perhaps that's an area where we could where we could consider before we lay off significant teachers. That's it.
Okay. Jonathan?
I have several items. I for for starters, just real quick, Julie, this is a reaction that something that was asked earlier with regard to the transportation budget and our contract with the bus company is I would encourage you just to ask them if if they have applied for a small business administration loan, a paycheck protection program, if they're still paying their people and we're in turn paying them because of it. If by chance, I I'm not, don't by any means want to be accusational with this, but they might have the ability to be getting paid to to continue to pay their people. If they do that through the CARES Act, I'd like us to be able to have that recovery since it's coming from us indirectly. So no response needed on that. Just love it if you could look into that. From a big picture perspective, for me, I am, I share Stacy's concern that the possibility that this is, this is more than a one year thing for us. World is changing rapidly. The what's happened this spring is going to accelerate a lot of changes in education, and it's going to affect our economy and what's going on. So I think I do think we need to be thinking about revisiting this conversation again sooner than rather than later than after the first time we go through it. A couple of things that I appreciate about the ideas that have been proposed, or I'd like to just stress, I really like the comment that part of the thought process and some of the evolution of the guiding principles in this was trying to avoid as much human toll as possible, simply meaning if if we can minimize the number of people who, after the dust settles on this, lose a job, that's that is an admirable objective. I think we have to bear it, keep in mind that that needs to be consistent with our mission and consistent with what we're doing. But I I like that idea being a part of the thought process. As much as I don't like to say it, with regard to the right sizing, if you will, of staff and the 10 and 1/2 FDE, if we utilize those ratios to hire staff on an annual basis, if we utilize those same numbers to decide how many people we're going to bring on, it only stands to reason that we also use those same ratios and those same numbers from year to year in years that our enrollment is down to consider reductions. And so I don't think that that's unreasonable. It affects people, and it's hard for me to say that. But I do think that's being consistent with the principles on which we build our budget on an annual basis. I also like that we are talking about some, I think by bringing us 3.4-ish million dollars of options with the target to be about 3 million, it does give us some opportunity to have some robust discussion and make some good decisions and to find some things that maybe don't need to be done. I'd like to throw a shout out to our community and our teachers who have been emailing all of us over the course of the weekend, throughout this meeting. I've read every one of them, except for those of you who emailed us during the meeting. We'll get to those when we're done. But we we need the feedback, we want the feedback, we appreciate your time and and taking having a voice. As to, I guess, things that I have some concerns about, when I saw the slide about the open positions to not fill, there were a couple of things that did give me pause. We pride ourselves on our Eastham programming, we pride, we call ourselves an Eastham district. It's it's the E in there has a lot to do with our district naturalist. My fear, if we delay replacing that person for a year or for two, that two becomes three, and it's several years down the road, and we're saying, remember when we had a district naturalist and how nice that was? So I'm hesitant to not to not fill that position. When I saw the dean not being replaced, my mind immediately took me to the February morning that Dr. Stallow and I spent at Grainwood, and the amount of time that Patrick was pulled away from our conversation, from the situation with a student who had some some extras, some extra needs that morning, shall we say. And we talk on a regular basis about the almost possible job we have for our principals to do and the importance of those roles. And so that's a spot that it's it's hard for me to picture that, especially with our added emphasis on social and emotional learning. I have, I'll echo the sentiments a little bit about the tech integration folks. My perspective on that is, I I feel as though it is probably going to be very important for us as a district to learn from what has happened this spring with regard to distance learning, because I think it's going to be important that we are able to provide that kind of service to more students who actually want to remain part of the district, but going forward maybe say that they like that model. I don't want to lose students to Minnesota Virtual High School. I would like to find ways for us to be able to keep those kids here. And so that those folks do seem to touch our teachers and our students closely. Perhaps I don't have a completely accurate understanding of the role as part of what I've learned tonight, but it's hard for me to picture that changing. I have a little bit of a concern with some of the parrot discussion and special ed. Certainly understand that there were specific people or specific students with specific needs, that's a change, and that's reasonable. I do think that we have discussed an ongoing need for more paras. I have heard that sometimes our IEPs, where we used to call for a para on a regular basis, we now talk about having access to an adult as part of an IEP as opposed to access to a para. That is anecdotal, I could be mistaken about that. But those, I think, keeping as many of those good folks as we can is important. And I think it's, I think it would go a long way to making us all feel better about what's happening if we felt like we were taking perhaps a little bit deeper dive into the administrative piece. It's easier, it's easy to say that, it's easier to talk about that than it is to talk about it in frontline. Cuts, it doesn't mean it's right. And so I would, I would echo my colleagues' comments more just to dive in with with some choices or some options and and let us know what the impact of those things would be. And we may come right back to saying that what you have proposed in that space is the right thing. But I think we probably would all like to see more. So those are all my pieces. I don't know, I think almost all of those things have been addressed in some way or another throughout the course of the meeting. So I don't know that I even need a response. If anybody has anything they'd like to throw in, that's great, but I don't expect it. Time for a break.
Any response from from administration? Okay. I'm not sure where to start, except that there's a lot of things that were said tonight that I would echo. Jonathan, I agree with you on the ratios. If that's how we've set our classroom size and ratios, that that's what we need to look at. I know that over the years, it's something that's always looked at at this time of year. It doesn't always have something directly related with budget cuts. So I understand that. The tech integrationist, I guess I'd like to understand more about what that position is. My understanding was that they would be teaching the teacher, more or less, and it would become ingrained in them as to what they need to do with the different products that we use, and that we need to dwell, or not dwell, but focus more on the curricular side of technology. And as far as vacancies go, I am disappointed the district naturalist position would not continue. I think programs need to have somebody that's in control of them. However, I do want to respect that the people that are here, I'd like to try to protect them as well. So I understand that. And I guess I would wonder if there's other revenue streams for some of these positions. I know at one time we had some grants for the naturalist position. I don't know if we're still qualified for that or not, or if that's something that's, you know, even out there. The dean position, we keep focusing on needs of kids, and I think that's an important position that we need to look at administratively. I think I lack a little knowledge in what some of our support administrators maybe do. I guess I'd like to understand that a little bit better. You know, it might be that, yep, we need every one of those positions. And for our teachers, I want to protect the teachers, but there's more to the teachers than just being the frontline teacher. There's a lot of support staff that's involved with those teachers to be able to do the jobs they're doing. And some of that support does come from administration. So it's not, you can't divide it all out, I don't believe. And then to the comment about whether we should stay with 3 million or go to the 3.4, I feel more strongly that we stay with the 3 million, because I do believe that there'll be cuts next year, maybe the year after that. And each time, it gets to be more hurtful for everyone and much more difficult going forward. So the least that we can do now and get by, we all don't know what the world will look like. So the least painful for now, and being aware that it might become more painful, probably will in the in the coming years. I was going to ask if anyone had any other comments to make after everyone spoke, but due to the fact that it's after, it's almost 7:30, I'm asking if we could save any other comments when we have the actual board meeting, we go through the budget, if everyone is okay with that. I'd like to adjourn the work session.
Lee, can I?
Stacy?
I just, I just want to make sure that we've provided clear enough direction for Terry to go forward with this.
I guess I was thinking that that would probably happen at the work, work at this meeting, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
If you want to hear that at the work session, we could go forward at that. Terry, what's your?
No, I mean, that's fine. We're probably all going to reiterate the same thing, basically, then.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you know, I think what'll what'll be tricky for us, there's certainly some common themes that you've provided, and a, no, I think, I think we've heard some some clear themes, and I think we will be expected to do some work as we come back to you.
My clock says 7:30. We'll reconvene at about 7:35 or so. If you need to make any type of break, please keep your screen up. We'll be using the same link if you do drop your screen. So we'll start again in about five minutes.